Good morning. I call to order the meeting of Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your interest in Alabama Community College System and we welcome you here. A great deal of work and preparation has gone into the development of the documentation for this meeting. Chancellor Baker and your staff, thank you for your work and all our college presidents for your preparation. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of adult education, workforce development, and academic transfer. We will now have our invocation. I'd like to call Pastor Carl McCarthy to the podium. Pastor McCarthy serves as a senior pastor at Riverbend Baptist Church in Lounsbury and is an operations specialist at the Montgomery Baptist Association. His two and a half years in each position have been marked by his dedication to preaching and teaching God's Word and his commitment to bring individuals, churches, and ministries across the river region together in cooperative efforts that meet both spiritual and physical needs. Carl is a retired 23-year veteran of the U.S. Air Force. Thank you for your service. He applies his learning leadership skills and master of arts in theological studies degree to serve God in the church and the association. Carl has a wife and three wonderful children, making his family a priority, second only to God. His wife assists in the church and his kids are enjoying life in the college or his productive young adults out in the world. Pastor McCarthy, thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's a privilege to represent this group to God. Let us go ahead and pray. Father God, we come before you. You are holy, merciful, just, and compassionate, Lord. Your Word says, "Your mercies are new every day." We seek those mercies today. Great is your faithfulness, Lord. And in that faithfulness, Lord, on this day, September 11th, I just want to pause in front of you and remember on this day back in 2001 and ask your peace and comfort on those that were affected by what happened. I pray, of course, for your mercies. It says in your Word, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart." That includes character, morals, of course, education, and vocation, Lord. I pray for those involved in the education process this morning. I pray for this board individually. I pray that clear minds are present. I pray for a positive outlook and focus, Lord. I pray for people being free of distractions so that your business can be conducted today. I pray for the 24 colleges across the state that are represented here and being thought of and being taken care of today, Lord. I pray for the teachers in those colleges. I pray for the administration and the faculty, both represented here and represented across those colleges. I pray, of course, for the students in those colleges. Let learning be plentiful. I pray for those that are desiring to learn heading into the college or starting this year. Father, thank you for these things. I pray for the board today. Let your business be done today. Let it be both God honoring first and appropriate to what needs to be done. I pray for the best interests of those that are out in the school system, the individual students, Lord. I pray for a unified voice across this board. And of course, I pray for your wisdom. It says in the Bible, "To ask for your wisdom, seek it, and you will give it abundantly." I pray for, of course, success today, Lord. I pray for these things in your gracious son's name, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for our pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jim Shale?
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell?
Present.
Ms. Valerie Gray?
Present.
Mr. Edgar Rogers?
Present.
Mr. Ron Houston?
Present.
Mr. Levellin Graham?
Present.
Mr. Tim McCarthy?
Present.
Mr. Grant Leinsen?
Present.
Director Yvette Bridgerton?
Present.
Governor Kay Ikey?
All right, thank you. Our agenda was distributed advanced to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Amen.
Have a motion by Pastor McCarthy, second by Mr. Wrong. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes or raise your hand.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to approve our agenda. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by Ms. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor approving either raise your hand or voice vote?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our minutes from our August 14th meeting were also distributed advanced to our board members for their review. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Leinsen motions, Mr. McCarthy second. Any discussion? All those in favor either raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oh, we don't have anybody signed up for public comment. Okay, all right. We'll now move to our college spotlight, which is Wallace Community College Dothan. Dr. Linda Runk, Young.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the opportunity and certainly pleased to be here with the board, the chancellor, and Chair Rogers. We appreciate it so much to be able to spotlight one of our students. And as you are aware, certainly students come to us with issues or obstacles along the way, and they have resilience and determination to fulfill their dreams, and we provide the path to help them fulfill those dreams. And it's been Wallace's privilege to serve our students, to guide them for the past 75 years. We're celebrating our 75th year this year and certainly have enjoyed reflecting on the past and then thinking about all the accomplishments of the college the last 75 years as we moved from 13 sheet metal workers who came from World War II, who took a class at Napier Field, to today where we serve almost 5,000 students in credit and non-credit classes. So Wallace has empowered generations for that long to meet challenges and to bring confidence to students and give them the support they need to succeed in their future, their future through education. Our student spotlight today for this board meeting has certainly, she has certainly a bright future ahead of her. Jessica Bradley was a respiratory therapy student, and she graduated in May, and she's a registered respiratory therapist now. And she came to us after an initial failure in college. And though she couldn't join us in person today, she is working. We have a video we'd like to show you about Jessica's story.
It's absolutely necessary, yet often taken for granted. Just like the rhythm of inhaling and exhaling, my life has been a series of ups and downs, struggles and triumphs. Since having my son, I've been extremely motivated to not only better our lives, but be a role model for him. My first experience with college was not an easy one. When I first enrolled, I took online classes. With the financial pressures of life, I had to make the decision to disconnect internet services, which caused me to not be successful in my online courses. Being in an abusive marriage added another level of stress that also contributed to my first failure in college. I thought that I would never be able to go back to school. The wind was temporarily knocked out of that dream. Nearly 10 years ago, I began my career in healthcare. I knew I wanted to work with patients, but never knew exactly where I belonged in the hospital. I have worked on every floor of local hospitals, working directly with patients and in non-clinical settings. In 2020, I made the switch to working in the operating room and discovered how much I loved cardiopulmonary patients. I shadowed CRNAs in respiratory therapists and fell in love with the field of respiratory therapy. With each patient I encountered, I witnessed the impact respiratory therapists had on their lives, their ability to restore breath, to restore hope. It restored my hope of going back to school. In 2021, I decided to start taking academic classes at Wallace Community College to prepare for entrance into the respiratory therapy program. And in 2022, I was accepted into the respiratory therapy program. I am now employed as a respiratory therapy intern, and I get to see a wide variety of patients needing specialized care by respiratory therapists. Since returning to school, I have now learned how to prioritize my time, take initiative, and make the most of the great opportunities Wallace has given me. I have gained confidence in myself and take pride in the work that I have done to better prepare for my future. Wallace did all of that for me. Where I once thought I would never return to school, now my goal after graduation is to transfer to Jacksonville State University and complete the four plus one Master's Bridge Program to further my education and provide advanced care for my patients. Over the years, I've learned that failures are not the end. They are simply an opportunity to learn, and it's never too late to further your education. Sometimes you just have to take a deep breath and go for it.
We are so proud of Jessica, as you can imagine. After her initial setback some years ago at another college, she found purpose. And purpose in the field of respiratory therapy. It's an occupation that's expected to grow at a better-than-average rate by 2032. And when Jessica knew it was time to fulfill that purpose and go back to school, she entrusted Wallace to help her fulfill her dream, and that was a decision that we're honored to have been able to do and to support her. As we continue to celebrate our 75th anniversary, Wallace remains committed to fostering a community for students like Jessica the next 75 years. A community where dreams are realized and where obstacles are overcome with helping hands from the college. It's certainly a testament to what our system of community colleges can do for the students who need us most. So thank you for the opportunity to share Jessica's story with you today.
Thank you, Dr. Young. That's a great reminder of why we're here and what we're doing, changing lives, improving lives, and improving our communities. Thank you very much. We'll now move into the Executive Legal and Public Information Section, Section 8, Action Items A, and I'm going to lump these first three together. They're all three mission statements. Action Items A1, 2, and 3. A1 is Northeast Alabama Community College Remove and Review and Approval of Mission Statement. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the current mission statement of Northeast Alabama Community College, of Wallace Community College Selma, and of Bishop State Community College Mobile. Do I have a motion to approve these three items?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Gray, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston. Any discussion? All those in favor, voice vote or raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Next, we'll move to Action Item, Item 8A4. Jefferson State Community College Request of Approval to Dr. James McLendon Nursing Wing. It is recommended the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt a resolution naming the nursing and allied health wing of the St. Clair Pel City Camp the nursing and allied health wing of the St. Clair Pel City Campus as the Dr. James H. McLendon Nursing Wing, and to add appropriate signage. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, either voice, vote, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move into Items 9A1. Instruction, Research, and Development Adult Education Facilities, Physical Information, Technology, and Workforce Development. First action item is the revised 24, 25 revised ACCS salary schedules. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees adopt the attached 20, 24, 25 revised salary schedules for the community and technical colleges and the Alabama Technology Network. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Houston, second?
Second.
Ms. Gray, second? Any discussion? All those in favor, have a voice, vote, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
Next is Item 9A2. Coastal Alabama Community College Associate in Applied Science in Mechatronics, Robotics, and Automation Engineering Technology. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve Coastal Alabama Community Colleges' application for an associate in applied science in mechatronics, robotics, and automation engineering technology to be implemented fall semester 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Britton, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston. Any discussion? All those in favor, either raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, Item 9A3. At Gadsden State Community College, an associate in applied science for surgical technology. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve Gadsden State Community Colleges' application for an associate in applied science degree in surgical technology to be implemented fall semester 2024. So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. McCartney, second. Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor, have a voice, vote, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 9A4. Trenton State Community College Associate in Applied Science Data Analytics. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Trenton State's Community Colleges' application for an associate in applied science degree in data analytics to be implemented spring semester 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second by, I think that's Mr. Mitchell. Okay, all right. Any discussion? All those in favor, either signify by voice, vote, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 9A5. Chattahoochee Valley Community College Associate in Applied Science Electrical Technology. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve Chattahoochee Valley Community Colleges' application for an associate in applied science in electrical technology to be implemented fall semester of 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gray, second. Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A6. Alabama Community College System Allocation of the FY 2024/25 Industry Certification Initiative Funds Existing Industry Training Program. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize the chancellor to distribute through grants the sum of $300,000 from the Legislative Appropriation for Industry Certification Initiative Funds. Individual grants awarded by the chancellor shall be limited to a maximum of $15,000 for the purpose of providing training for existing businesses. The chancellor and his staff are authorized and encouraged to use all appropriate means to expedite the award of grants to timely meet the needs of existing businesses. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McCartney?
Second.
Second, Levin. Any discussion? All those in favor, either voice, vote, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 9A7. Alabama Community College System Allocation of the FY 2024/25 Industry Certification Initiative Funds for Skills USA. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize the chancellor to provide scholarships for 2024 Skills USA Alabama Competition Winners who are entering or have entered post-secondary education. Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. McCartney?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ron Houston, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A8. Alabama Community College System Allocation of the FY 2024/25 Industry Certification Initiative Funds. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize the allocation of a portion of the FY 24, 25 Industry Certification Initiative Funds as outlined below. It's $6,941,316 for various colleges and various uses. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lightsey, second. Mr. McCartney, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Item 9A9. Jefferson State Community College Exterior Improvements of the Bethune-Duramus Hall and George Layton Building. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve Change Order Number 5 for the civil contract for the project named Jefferson State Community College Exterior Improvements of Bethune-Duramus Hall and George Layton Building. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Houston, have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome. All those in favor, or excuse me, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by voice, vote, or raising your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're at 9A10. At Southern Union State Community College, Construction of New Aviation Maintenance Training Hangar at Auburn University Airport. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Southern Union State Community College to proceed with project name Construction of New Aviation Maintenance Training Hangar at Auburn University Airport. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than December 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Gray, second. Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. These next three items, Items 11, 12, and 13, 9A11, 12, and 13, are all taking place at Coastal Alabama Community College. And I'm gonna ask to lump these together, but I'm gonna read all three of the action items. Coastal Alabama Community College Bruton Campus New Bleacher Press Box and Restroom Building. It is recommend the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with the project named Bruton Campus New Bleacher Press Box and Restroom Building. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than November 15th, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. And Action 9A12 is Coastal Alabama Community College Bruton Campus Multi-Building Re-roofing and Repair. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with Phase 2 of the project named Bruton Campus Multi-Building Re-roofing and Repair Neil Building Bid Package. Construction contracts for Phase 2 shall be executed no later than November 15th, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. The next one is Item 9A13. At Coastal Alabama Community College, the Fairhope Campus New Parking Lot. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with the project named Fairhope Campus New Parking Lot. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than December 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve all three of these items?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Jeb, second by Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, next, we will move into Item 9A14, which is at Bevel State Community College, Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center Edition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to proceed with the project named Jasper Campus HVAC Training Center Edition for Energy Services Infrastructure Training Center Site Work Bid Package. Construction contracts shall be executed no later than January 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Houston?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lightsey. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A15 at Bevel State Community College. Also, this is the Jasper Campus Gifting of Walker Hall to Jasper City Schools. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to proceed with the project named Jasper Campus Gifting of Walker Hall to Jasper City Schools. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lightsey?
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Item 9A16. This is Northeast Alabama Community College's New Soccer Field and Walking Track Repairs. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Northeast Alabama Community College to proceed with the project named New Soccer Field and Walking Track Repairs. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than December 1st, 2024, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Gray, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Houston, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by voice, vote, or raising your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A17. At Wallace State Community College Hansville Campus, the New STEM Gateway Building. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees authorize Wallace State Community College to proceed with the construction project named Hansville Campus New STEM Gateway Building. This is the demolition bid package. Construction contracts for the project shall be executed no later than May 1st, 2025, or this authorization shall expire. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Lightsey?
Second.
Mr. Houston? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by voice, vote, or raising your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Item 9A18, which is a resolution. Recommend for action resolution. This is a resolution approving and authorizing Chancellor Baker to complete negotiations and execute final construction contracts for the capitol improvement project at Coastal Alabama Community College. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Ms. Gray, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by voice, vote, or raising your hand?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, our last action item is Item 9A19. Lawson State Community College Addition of an Instructional Site. It is recommend that the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees approve an additional instructional site for Lawson State Community College. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Houston, second? Mr. McCartney, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand or voice vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, move into Section 10 Personnel. Charlene Finkelstein.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Well, I'm Charlene Finkelstein. I work for Human Resources, and I have a couple new additions to our staff I'd like to briefly introduce to you. First of all, Mr. David Calhoun, would you stand? David joined our IT department recently as the new enterprise applications security analyst. He has almost 30 years of experience in graphic art and design. He worked for over 18 years at F&amp;E Sportswear, where he designed computer graphics and maintained their Mac computer systems. He most recently served 10 years as graphic artist specialist for the State of Alabama Department of Revenue, where he designed and maintained over 5,000 state tax forms, manuals, and promotional materials. Wow. He attended the University of Alabama, Auburn University, and Jefferson State Community College, and he holds certificates in cybersecurity administration, network defense, threat analysis, and system safeguards. And he's based here at our system office. Thank you, David. And Ms. Kelly Little. Kelly joined us recently as regional chief financial officer. She has over 25 years of experience in the accounting field, both in business and higher education. She served nine years with the University of South Alabama and the past four years at Bishop State Community College as payroll and benefits specialist. She most recently served as regional director of accounting for both Bishop State and Coastal Alabama Community Colleges, and she holds bachelor's degree in accounting from the University of Mobile, and she is based at Bishop State. So please help me welcome these super-talented new people to our staff.
Mr. Calhoun, Ms. Little, welcome aboard. We're glad you're here. Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask Dr. Linda Young if you would come back to the podium, please, ma'am. First of all, I'm gonna welcome all your, I know you've got several guests, different members. Would you like to introduce your guests, please?
Yes, please stand. Mark Nicholas is on the end, and he's our chief financial officer. Dr. George Norton, Dina Studats, Pam Bowman, executive assistant to the president. Dr. Ashley Wilkins, vice president. Miki Baker, who is our dean for student success. And then Angela Brannon is, works in our PR marketing area.
All right. Well, thank you. We, I want to direct everybody's attention to the screens. We've got a little short video we're gonna play. No video.
Accepting a presidency is one of the most important decisions you make, and the next important decision is when you leave it. And you gotta feel that the time is right, and I feel the time's right.
Picturing Dr. Young not being the face of Wallace Community College is hard for me to do, and when you consider being anywhere for 36 years, that says a lot to the character of a person.
You know, anyone in a leadership position faces sometimes insurmountable challenges. See somebody who's weathered that storm for that period of time in today's time is just simply unheard of.
It speaks to the fact that she truly loved what she did each and every day.
I was a student at a community college, junior college at the time, in enterprise. That's where I fell in love with community colleges. That's where I knew that I wanted to spend my career.
She has been an instrumental piece of our economic development and workforce development strategies for many years.
She's a leader of leaders. I'd refer to her as a lighthouse. She has been that strong pillar for people. You know, when times get rough, she's always been one to give wise counsel. It's really been remarkable just to see the way she's been able to provide that level of stability for the wiregrass area.
The most gratifying part of my job is to see students who come to us many times. They're scared to death. They don't have confidence about college. They're first generation, like I was when I went to college. And then to see them blossom, to be successful in their coursework, and to graduate and just become so confident about their success, that's what's so rewarding about what we do at a community college.
It's a different chapter that's about to begin in her life, but I fully expect her to continue to make an impact on the state of Alabama.
I would hope that she reaps the benefits of all those years of the hard work. I would hope that she reaps the benefits of all those years of the hard work and not feeling like that every morning when she wakes up, she's carrying the weight of a community college on her shoulder.
I'm not getting up at 5:30 every morning. I know that. I'm looking forward to sleeping late. But I just think it's time for a new beginning for the institution with another person and have, have new thoughts and ideas, and we'll grow. We won't miss a beat. It's exciting, but it's just time.
Dr. Young, congratulations on a truly extraordinary career in education. You've opened doors, paved the way, and created opportunities for countless others to follow. Dr. Young, you've dedicated your life's work to Wallace Community College. Your hard work and your tireless efforts have set a new standard of excellence, and there's no doubt that the impact of your achievements will be felt for generations to come, and that's quite a legacy. I want to thank you for your friendship, and I wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement, and congratulations on a job well done.
Clinton keeps really good secrets. I didn't realize he was meeting with all those people that he came by. Thank you so much. This is quite an honor and certainly a surprise. I mentioned that several people have asked me what I would do in retirement, and I mentioned not getting up at 5:30 in the morning. There are two other things I'm not going to do, and that is not change passwords until I get ready to do that. And y'all will like this, I'm not going to take any more FERPA tests. So, um, I've had the opportunity to work at five different community colleges, all in the Wiregrass, and the system office some years ago, and that really prepared me for what I ended up with as a president, and certainly enjoyed my years at Wallace Community College Dethan as I did at all the other ones I worked as well. It's really everything that I wanted to do. I've never wanted to be at any other level of education except community colleges, and I feel honored to have served community colleges during their period of dynamic growth and greater visibility, positive visibility, and certainly the years have been filled with friendships and opportunities that I think few positions would give to someone, so I'm grateful for that. Our system is and has been a vision, a destiny, and the future of so many people in Alabama if we stop and think about it. And those are the days that we feel so fortunate to have what we have and to be blessed and to be a part of an organization that transforms the lives of other people. And I want to thank you for your role, Chancellor's role, members of the board, your role in being a part of that transformation that takes place. Under your watch, our system has moved forward at exciting speed and with growth and, as I mentioned, greater visibility, and that, that's exciting to see that and be a part of it. So we know that you're committed to community colleges, and we thank you and we appreciate that, and I know my colleagues join me in saying that, how much we appreciate what you do, because I know the jobs are sometimes thankless jobs, but we do appreciate and realize what you're doing and see it every day in those students like Jessica. So I'll just tell you thank you for allowing me to be one of your presidents. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Young. We're not quite finished with this. I'd like to ask Chancellor Baker say a few words and make a few remarks.
Well, I've often said about Linda, and I call her Linda because actually we commuted on weekends occasionally and one night during the week, all the way from Coffey County to Auburn in post-credit work. And, but Linda has always done a good job, even in an environment where you didn't have to. I know that many of you understand that. But I appreciate that fact. I appreciate the fact that her heart was in her business. She was totally committed to it, and she made a huge difference in the lives of a lot of people, a lot of students. And I, I just wish her the best. You know, you've got someone over here you didn't introduce.
Well, he's not on staff, but I will introduce him. My friend Merrill Shirley from, who is an attorney in Elba Enterprise area and serves as attorney for two school boards down there, so I'm glad he could come with me today.
Well, I, I, he's a friend also of mine, and, and it just, it does me a lot of good to know that you're walking out of the facilities feeling good about what you've done over the years, and you're leaving a legacy that will be there for many, many years. And I, I just want you to know how much I appreciate the job you've done and the job that your staff has done.
Thank you. As y'all know, I don't normally read proclamations, but I'm going to read a proclamation. I'm going to read every word of it, so just bear with me. This is a proclamation honoring Dr. Linda Young for 36 years of dedicated service as President of Wallace Community College. Whereas Dr. Linda Young, a lifelong educator and academic administrator who started her higher educational journey as an alumnus of an Alabama community college, is retiring after devoting 54 years to education, 36 years of which she served as a president of an Alabama community college. And whereas Dr. Young served as an instructor and an administration at her alma mater, Enterprise State Community College, as Executive Assistant to the Chancellor of the Alabama Community College System and as Dean of Academic Affairs at Lurleen B. Wallace Junior College in Andalusia prior to 1988. And whereas Dr. Young was appointed President of Sparks State Technical College in Eufaula in 1988, becoming the first female president of a state technical college in Alabama. And whereas Dr. Young was appointed President of Wallace Community College Dethan in 1999, when the college merged with the Sparks campus. And whereas Dr. Young's tenure with Alabama Community College System has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the growth, success, and well-being of the college and community. And whereas Dr. Young has been a visionary leader, spearheading numerous initiatives that have expanded educational opportunities, improved facilities, and enhanced the college's reputation within the region and beyond. And whereas under her guidance, Wallace Community College has not only thrived but has also become a beacon of learning and innovation, providing an inclusive environment where all students can achieve their dreams. And whereas her leadership has been instrumental in advancing the mission of the college, fostering a culture of excellence, and ensuring that the students receive a quality education that prepares them for success in their careers and lives. And now therefore we, the Alabama Community College System Board Trustees, do hereby recognize and express our deepest gratitude to Dr. Linda Young for her years of outstanding service, leadership, and unwavering dedication. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be entered into the official records and as a copy of it be presented to Dr. Linda Young as a token of our appreciation and esteem, the 11th day of September, 2024. Thank you, Dr. Young.
Thank you. Thank you, Chancellor, members of the board. I really appreciate the honor and recognition.
I'd like to now ask President Jackie Screws to come up for her presentation to, to you, Dr. Young.
She keeps good secrets, I'd say.
Give me that first.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone. I am just delighted to have this opportunity to provide some words in recognition of an awesome, awesome educator. What you may know is that our tenure together spans pretty much my entire career in the Alabama Community College system. This woman is responsible for hiring me, bringing me into the system, allowing me to grow my wings, and daring me to soar. That's the kind of impact that she has had, not only on the Wiregrass, but also on our entire state. As I thought about what I would say this morning about Dr. Young, I thought about a poem by Henry Wadsworth Longfellow, and I want to quote just a stanza of that poem. "Lives of great men all remind us," in this case a great woman, "we can make our lives sublime, and departed leave behind us footprints on the sands of time." I cannot say how impactful Dr. Young's life has been, and she has left some indelible footprints on the sands of time for our state, for our nation, and I don't know how many people can stand starting a career 12 years old and do 54 years of service. It is amazing. At this time, I would like to present a plaque on behalf of the Alabama Community College System Presidents Association, and it reads, "Happy Retirement." And I hope my eyes will help me. Honoring Dr. Linda Young for your unwavering dedication to communities, students, faculty, and staff through 36 years of leadership in the Alabama Community College system. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Okay, now, Mr. Lightsey has a, has a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of Trustees accept Dr. Linda Young's retirement as President of George C. Wallace Community College effective October 1st, 2024.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Houston. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good luck to you, Dr. Young. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young.
Now we'll have item number 11, Chancellors Report.
Because of that retirement, we are in a position where we need to consider the future. And certainly we will depend on Linda to help us in that process. Effective the 1st of next month, I will appoint an interim president. We will do and study, as we have in every other case, to identify the strengths, some things that we may need to do to bring about some additional support from this office to the college. And it is the intent that we will have a permanent president in place by January 1st. So we will go through a period of time of evaluating, looking in depth, and working with the staff and faculties there to develop a plan for the future. I expect it to be pretty quick, and a lot of good things are happening at that school, and we just want to make sure that we are doing the kinds of things that we should be doing to provide the support and help the school continue to grow and prosper.
That's it? Good deal. Thank you. All right, item number 12, do we have any committee reports? I don't know of any. Okay, our date and location of the next meeting, we'll have a work session here shortly, and then our next Board Trustees meeting will be on October 9th, and we're now going to have a, a move to an executive session. Ms. Gray has a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a-
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
I just learned that Mark has set up the executive-
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the consideration the board is willing to offer or accept when considering the purchase, sale, exchange, lease, or market value of real property.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lightsey, any discussion? All those in favor signify by voice vote or raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The board shall not reconvene the board meeting after the executive session, but there will be a work session following the executive session, and the executive session will take place in this room here, so we'll need to vacate this room for, for a few minutes. So with that said, thank you for being here. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.